I will call this meeting to order. Welcome to our new annual meetings where we have live music. Do quick introductions, we'll start Mr. Schrader.
Jim Schrader, Town of Black Earth.
James Carman, Village of Mazamani.
Tom Turk, Black Earth.
Sidney Byteam, Town of Mazamani.
Jim Searsacker, County of Burris.
Isaiah Crowe, Village of Black Earth.
Mark Overly, District Administrator, Village of Mazamani.
Alright, will you all join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, at this time, we need to elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. I would like to listen to a concert of church here. Alright? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand in an eye. Opposed? Alright, we also need to designate a clerk. So we need a nomination for a clerk.
I will nominate Sidney Byteam.
Alright?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Opposed? Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last annual meeting? So, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, do you see any corrections or anything? Alright, all those in favor, aye. Alright. State of the school report.
As a transition, I'll also share, this year in the agenda, state law was changed and so there is only four resolutions this year. Compared to last year to this year, no longer, yup, nope. In fact, remember when Bob Butler from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards mentioned it in our last training, but no longer need a special meeting or to discuss leasing a property at a, instead of property at a, annual meeting or special meeting.
And actually, before you start, I'll have all, because there is no board any longer, so we will all move up that direction.
Also, just want to share, as people are organizing, Sammy Arkit is a school board member and is not, is excused from tonight's meeting, personal business. Also, I just want to introduce the admit team, I'm up here, Cheryl Knowles is our business official, Vivian Heatwall, Dr. People's Services, Dale Green is our principal at Black Earth of Mazamani, and Amy Bespren, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Asta is accompanying the band and choir at the concert, and Rich Meyer, our AD Assistant Principal, definitely does not attend board meetings based on the evening responsibilities that you'll be doing a lot of this week, because we do, we've had a successful athletic season, so we have two home events Thursday, so if you're doing something on Thursday, 4:00 at the soccer field, and 7:00 in the gymnasium for volleyball, and cross-country, you have sectionals on Saturday in Darlington, if you wake up early, I want to go for a ride.
And the eight-man game is Friday?
Eight-man game, thank you. Also, it's Friday, Wisconsin Heights last year decided as a district to go to eight-man, this was our last year for two years at 11-man, we'll revisit that conversation along the way, but we'll be playing Hardview at the stadium at 7:00, I would assume, on Friday, so. So I wanted to provide some highlights, and I think there are many wonderful things, I'm not going to read the packet verbatim enclosed in the annual meeting packet, is a summary of what was accomplished let in last year in 2014-15, a lot of personal professional achievements as well as achievements of our students, and so very proud to represent and serve our Wisconsin Heights School District. This year was really a summary, or this, the summer was the result of three years of planning to make this site a little bit better. Couple of years ago, as you all know, we had petitioned, the DOT approved, that we have a different entrance, that was redone last year, finished last fall, as well as we've been working on doing some significant capital improvements at this site. The board has spent a lot of time, started about two years ago, on asking, how can we make this site better, how can we better serve our students? But I think they have done a great job in representing the district and looking out in the best interests of our students. Three years ago, there was some concern that we'd be going to for bond referendum to make some significant repairs, and we were fortunate, sometimes good to be, better to be lucky than good, but we were able to accomplish some significant changes that have opened the door for the future. Highlights from last year include curriculum adoptions in both math and reading language arts, as well as associated interventions. This is the second phase of curriculum adoptions, we're currently studying science this year, as well as talking in-depth about computers, we may have, we may end up pushing that out for a year, but we're also studying Spanish, and we'll be working to do an adoption, last year, we postponed the adoption of interventions for students, I believe K through 2. The company, LLI, that we're going to be purchasing from was doing a revision, so as a result, we decided to postpone that, we'll be doing that once the revisions come out later this spring. Elementary school have been talking about how to best support students' behaviors, and they took out Dale and Amy and several teachers, took in some training last year, PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, is now implemented, if you go into Black Earth or Mazamani Elementary, you'll see some common language, and staff, and Dale, if you'd like to add a little bit of what you observed so far this year, give you 30 seconds warning, but the staff started out the year with a clear message with students, in the emphasis that gives students the best opportunity for success. All of us, I think, can agree that we learn differently, we're better at some things, we're not as good at others, and this is one more way that we can make the elementary school experience positive for students, so. 30 seconds warning, Dale, would you like to add anything there?
Sure. With PBIS, you know, main focuses are norming students for expected behaviors, we have a system in place at both elementary schools where we acknowledge those expected behaviors. Also, a key program is, we teach the students what our expectations are, whether that's in the cafeteria, the hallway, the playground, the classroom, the time, we do lesson planning, and we actually teach lessons on the expected behaviors that we want to see at the elementary level. And with that, built into that, you know, if students are having, I'll say, having difficulties meeting certain expectations, we can reteach, and we can review, and we have, and we put plans in place so they can meet those expectations. But so far, to start this school year, we piloted part of the program last May, and so far, this, start of this school year, it's going very well, we have high expectations for the future, and see good things with it.
Thank you. One of the things the admit team did over the summer was take part in a first aid training for mental health, and we thought, as leaders, we needed to better understand our students, so we went through the training with Journey's Mental Health, and what we're going to be doing, we're hosting a community session on November 12th, if there's, right now, we've got about over 20 staff that are coming, so we may move it into one of the gyms if there's a lot of interest, we've sent this out to the first responders, of course, they see a lot more than anything, you know, the school, and the teachers, they see a lot, as community members, we also see our students, you know, at times struggling with, you know, making the right decisions. But mental health has been a regular conversation, and the admit team decided that, yes, in time, so this is the first year, we'll provide some opportunities for conversations, but we look forward to training our staff and helping students if they're struggling with things. One of the things we're hoping to do is provide some training even as early as January to some of our staff, again, there's some grants available, if you were listening to the news, I was at the announcement when the county exec, Joe Prezi, announced that three additional teams as mental health support systems, and it's a little bit different than maybe the, I'll call it the educational model, but this is a 90-day model, and they've been, they've had this going for a couple of years in three districts, Verona, Sun Prairie, and Madison, and those districts are selected based on need, based on the number of calls that were going on in those communities. We're fortunate that in the budget proposal, so if you meet a, somebody on the Dane County Board, please let them know that as a district, we're interested in, as they've added three teams, right now, we're looking to partner with Milton Cross Plains, we, you know, would it be great to have a person as a contact out here all the time? Yes, is it realistic that we may get a little bit of the funding or benefit a little bit if we partner, so we're looking to partner with Milton Cross Plains. This program is a 90-day program, meet the students where they're at, get them in contact with people, and hopefully in 90 days, they're in a better place, and the reports that we get from Addison, Verona, and Sun Prairie is an absolute benefit to them. Other things that we continue to work on, technology, as you know, ever-evolving, working to enhance our access points, right now at Mazamani, we probably have two act, we have three classrooms per grade, we're averaging two mobile labs per grade at Mazamani, one per grade level at Black Earth. This site, as we talk about optimizing, we know absolutely that we will eventually transition to a full wireless program, it will become students and staff first, ideally, as you know, if you go to other venues, all the free Wi-Fi and everything, in time, we will get to that point, but our promise is to support our students first. This time last year, we were connected to the village of Mazamani with Trail, and I know those are positive conversations that are, that are ongoing, heading towards the village of Black Earth. I think also, as I look to the future, I think some very positive conversations happening in both villages, as reported in the newspaper, about working with a third party and talking about what does our community want, what would draw people to our community, make our community stronger, and as a district, we've said all along, we truly are successful because of the support of all our communities, and you know, that's, I think, something that we've been able to capitalize and we continue to need to grow. Things that have changed in Wisconsin Heights, a significant change in open enrollment out, very positive for us, and also at the same time, more students coming in. One of the niches that I believe Wisconsin Heights may occupy is, we do know our students, we do know that, hey, if it's Tom Turk that maybe is out for one sport, someone says, Tom, why don't you come out for another sport? Why don't you become part of an activity? Because we need you to fill a role, and I think that is just a fantastic selling point of our district. One of the other initiatives is in leadership and training future leaders. This year, with our admit team, along with five other teachers, are going to be going through an adaptive schools training, we're going to be collaborating with other Dane County school districts and working to, you know, in a sense, grow the conversation of leadership and better facilitate meetings, opportunities, to help all of us grow professionally. We'll continue to talk about, if you've been following, about how to best serve our students and our communities. You know, very aware that this building is right in the middle of two villages, I think that's a very, I mean, so we have this wonderful opportunity to be, to be an active part of the community, and I think it's up to us as staff, as we have board and administrative conversations, to talk about how else can the school district give back to the community. Those conversations will take time, and the newsletter, we'll talk, I'll be, I'm, the front page is summarizing kind of some of those challenges. The two easy questions I ask is, is there a better way to efficiently operate the school district, and really, should updates to the buildings be done primarily through new construction or remodeling? Two easy questions to ask, much more difficult to find the answer that fits, but you know, the work that I saw, if I think about from two years ago, and we started with HSR, who helped facilitate our facility analysis, they told us things about our buildings that we thought we knew, but they also reminded about us about things that we hadn't always thought of. And we just need to continue to have those honest and open conversations, and how to figure out how to increase student achievement, but also allow our students to grow and prosper, and so as they walk across the stage, which is the end goal, we have in the doors wide open. You know, it is not unusual for all of our students to graduate at Wisconsin Heights, last year, no different. The best part about last year was it wasn't about a doubt, there wasn't any doubt, I mean, a couple of years ago, it was, we got a student to graduate 30 minutes before the ceremony. But we had students last year that because of mentoring by community members, that made a different, those community members, school officials made a difference in those students' lives and got them to walk across the stage, which, again, is, is the end goal, college and career ready, if we want to use the educational jargon these days, but bottom line is to give all of our students an opportunity for success, so, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to reintroduce Cheryl Knowles, she is our business official, Cheryl's been with us for all of six weeks. So we're going to walk you through a brief outline of the, what's in the board packet, and if you have questions, just let us know, happy to answer them during the presentation or at the end, so, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, so the first slide I have is a budget summary, that's giving you totals of four different funds. Fund 10 is the general fund, that's where most everything is quoted to. Fund 27 is Special Ed Fund, Fund 50 is food service, and then at the bottom, we have the debt, which is Fund 39, or 38. What we did was put together the totals of the expenditures for those funds, but then we also pulled out about eight of the highest categories for the Fund 10, so you'll see in the middle, there are the specific items, athletics, salary benefits, transportation, we're just picking some of the larger expenses to show you the totals.
So I just want to read, what Cheryl just said is, this is the summary on top, sometimes these are based out of frequently asked questions that I've received over time, so people say, what does it cost to run our whole athletic program? $290,000. These numbers are just line items, they're eight of the biggest items that impact, or you know, basically, these are expenditures to run the district. This is the overall summary. One thing I want to point out, and we'll mention it probably later, we've paid off the track and lighting debt, so right now, we only have the Qualley School Construction Bonds, that's the QSCB, that money comes out of the actual budget, we, the $71,500 is the principal, the federal government credits us most of the interest, excuse me, because of sequester, there is, there continues to reinforce, there is no such thing as a free lunch. With that, that money is all paid from, from 2009, 2010, energy savings realized, and so this money, in five years, will give us another opportunity to put that dollar amount at that time, as the board plans forward, back into the district, but this money, this debt, which is pretty small compared to most districts, has all been as a result of energy savings in 2009, 2010.
So we have a summary page of what our balance sheet, our fund balance is going to look like, what the beginning fund balance is for this year, along with what our revenues are, where they're coming from, and then the expenditures, and one thing to take a look at is, the largest difference in the revenues is the local sources and the state sources. The state sources is the aid that we're getting from the state, which continues to decrease, which means that we end up getting more of our money from the taxpayers, and that's showing on the local sources there, an increase from 7.2 million to almost 7.7 million in taxpayer dollars.
Last year, or actually in January, we talked about fund balance dedication, we were running quite high in terms of fund balance, and you know, we had built it up over time, and it's allowed us to borrow, or not to borrow, borrow very little, quite honestly, not at all in the recent past, and we also do a lot of credit through a local bank as opposed to doing a short-term loan, so that saves us, we don't, if we've had a draw, we only pay for interest in which we borrowed the money. As you can tell, we made a decision in June, and also planned this back in January, that we would spend down the, some of our fund balance, that money went to pay for the pavement or offset the cost of the pavement, as well as the APEC in Mazamani. In Mazamani, we've just, we replaced the chiller, we had talked about adding controls, and it was a unanimous decision just to replace the chiller. So, as you can tell, if you look at these total expenditures, roughly, well, $520,000 is coming out here, and we'll, we'll look at that later, but you know, you can tell that the difference between this year and this year is primarily that we've elected to spend, to pay and fund two major projects.
You will also notice under the inter-district payments, $220,000 last year to $271,000 this year for revenue, and that's due to open enrollment changes, which Mark mentioned And this slide is a summary of Funds 21 and 27, and you'll notice that there's an operating transfer listed on the top of the revenues, which is projected at $790,000. What that is, is Fund 27 cannot carry a balance, positive or negative, so if we're short in Special Ed funding, we have to transfer from Fund 10 to 27 to offset that. So at the bottom, the fund balance, the $57,867, is just for Fund 21, because Fund 27 cannot have a fund balance. Then we have our debt service fund, our Fund 38, which we mentioned, there's a large difference here from last year, $150,000 to $85,000 this year, and that is due to paying off the track and lighting project in 14-15.
And food service, we projected last year a little, little higher, we were able to, with purchasing through commodities, Togger made some adjustments, we currently work with Togger, they hired the food service manager, the employees, all the workers in the kitchen, the remainder of workers of the kitchen, our employees, became more efficient, and so we were projecting 351, 606, we were able to reduce that. Projecting a slight increase, we did offset the, what we've anticipated, probably upwards of a 2% increase in food, food costs, with a slight increase, modest increase in the meals, and again, this also zeroes out at the end of the year. So all in all, the increases have gone up, as discussed previously, by 4.3%, in years past, up until about two or three years ago, as you can see right here, we were still able to take advantage of some cost savings opportunities, starting last year, those cost-saving opportunities are no longer available. We'll continue to look, let's never say never, but it's, you know, we also, quite honestly, our student population has become more diverse, and so we have been hiring up personnel to support all of those students' needs. Here, and there's a larger trend, but here's a seven-year history, as you can tell, we've gone up and down, this was last year's amount, and we'll show you another slide, this was prior to, two parcels in the Town of Varig becoming, detaching, so this is, we'll show you those numbers in a little bit. The state, on average, the state went up 1.8% in equalized value, on average, so of course, there's highs and lows, certain areas of the state that are growing faster than others, but this year in Wisconsin Heights, we grew at 0.41%. Again, as we talk about levy and everything, you know, we adopt a district levy, however, each municipality has a different change in that they make those decisions locally. So as you can tell, within the Wisconsin Heights School District, there was some that remained more or less unchanged, and a few others that demonstrated growth, and others that reduced in equalized value. This has been a trend going on for years, and as the state aid decreases, the responsibility, you know, what happens is, we as a district ask and need more support from the local taxpayers, and so the trend right now, as you can tell, it's slowing down a little bit, but on the other hand, we are still reducing, you know, significantly in state aid. Now how will that change over time? As I shared to you before, we had fewer open enrolled out, positive, now, we had 12 seniors that graduated, and so as a result, our overall full-time equivalency, or FTEs, went down, even though that would be positive, the heftier open rolled out, the, I'll call it the 12 times 2,000 for rough numbers, it was a change in funding, we lost $24,000. However, we increased, you know, more coming in, and that's a $6,000 difference for us. So what's new, as I talked about, increased enrollment, believe it or not, since 3rd Friday, which we were at 660, we've added 10 students in the last two weeks. That growth, you know, is very positive, we have that capacity, the challenge, quite honestly, is for our staff and our building administrators to, okay, new student, you know, the old days were dad got the new job in June, the family moved in July, and they enrolled in August. That trend is gone, and so over time, that was the 3rd Friday counts, there's two way, there's two counts during the year, 3rd Friday in September, 2nd Friday in January. 3rd Friday in September is the best predictor of future growth, so we'll see, in terms of, will those 10 students stay? We would surely hope so, we are trending in a positive direction, that's new for us. So for budgeting in curriculum, for example, curriculum adoptions, prior to last year, we put a little money aside, so we were okay, but in the future, instead of budgeting 100%, because in declining enrollment, we would budget for what we had, and students left, we'd have a few books left over. Now we're budgeting at 102%, just for variability purposes. So we mentioned before, the, the two expenditures that we could not have done without planning the fund balance, the parking lot and the APEC project, we also have Mezzo bathrooms, just want to take some time, and as I alluded to before, are we going to make improvements by building new, or renovating is really the decision of the future. We had to, it was pointed out to us in the middle of the summer, a significant leak in second-floor bathrooms in Mezzo, we're not using them right now, we will have them fixed over the winter break. Indoor projects, you know, we have doors in buildings that are in their second or third life expectancy, and so we simply are addressing those as we go. We've been doing some of that, quite honestly, for the last five years, whether it's been doors, improving the classrooms, five years ago, we tiled parts of the Black Earth Elementary Schools because our students in 4K through 2, you know, we want them to get dirty, we want them to be in pains, we want them to be, you know, getting their hands, you know, into, into learning, so we've created those opportunities. Now it's time to, to put new carpet in there, that carpet's 40 years old, it's served us well. And again, our debt, very low compared to most, most districts. So we're still getting a little bit of help from the state. So we're still getting a little bit of help from the state. Calculating revenue for state aid is a three-year average. We increased dramatically last year. We dipped a little bit, and so we're still getting 5.5% special adjustment aid from the state. In time, we'll need to account for that, and, let me go back one. You know, eventually, when we're, when we begin to grow over a three-year timeframe, the 5.5% will no longer be courtesy of the state, and we'll be responsible for that. And hopefully, with more students, keeping the same number of sections, that will be our buffer over time, and then the question will be, when do we have a fourth section? And, but, we're still, I would say, a significant amount of time away from that. What does it look like? Here's the changes. If you remember, 2011, '12, there was a cap with the changes at the state level. As a result, it was a one-year hiatus, the money went right back to us. And we, and once again, it came back on the local taxpayer. We have that increase, slight decrease last year, and because of changes in student funding and everything, you know, and what I want to emphasize here is, when you hear press releases about, "We've increased the amount of money going to schools," that is all schools in Wisconsin. That is public schools and voucher schools. And so, even though we've increased money going in, school districts like Wisconsin Heights are still getting less from the state. We reduced our state aid by just over 14% last year. The maximum you can decrease, it's supposed to be 15%, mathematically, this year was 15.09%. We've been there for the last seven years, at least. So, this is the budget as proposed by two-digit function. This is what we'll bring forward today, and then also, the board will confirm at the next board meeting. It'll vote on it in the next board meeting, so. With that, any questions about what has been presented in terms of the budget? Thank you, we'll turn it back to the chair.
I have, I have one. I have some questions too. I know with, this actually could be a question for the seven board members too. With, with market value for wages and that type of stuff, has, has the board thought about any type of resolution for caps for our administration of employees? Because when, I believe our referendum money for this year is about 1.425 million, is that correct? The seven employees at, at an administration level make up 46% of that referendum money, dollars. I mean, at some point, we're seeing this year, social security is not getting, 0.38% increase. I mean, at some point, when do, when do we, as a district, maybe set caps on our, that what we can afford to pay out? Because I don't think we have the tax base to support market, market value wages.
Well, the reality is, in 2011, all the employees had to pay 50% of their return. So, if you're asking about caps right now, they're, all the employees are just approaching their wages at 2011. And I, I think it's very important to state publicly that the purpose of the referendum was not to fund administrator salaries. And so, it would be inaccurate to suggest that that amount of money would be equivalent to, or the referendum was for funding administrators. The purpose of the referendum was to deal with changes in the state aid, as I spoke previously, of there's $240,000 reduced aid. That money has increased over time because aid has been reduced. In 2007, 2008, the amount of state aid for Wisconsin Heights is $3.8 million, maybe even a little bit higher. We're at $1.6 million. And right now, based on, as, as we go every other year to the community, we ask them for support, and the community supported us at 60% this time. Understandably, we look every single time for opportunities for efficiency, for practical decision-making, and so we look at the whole picture when there's a recommendation to the board. And tonight, the board is not present. The board is here as community members, and so I just wanted to clarify that statement. This is not about administrator salaries today. This is about the annual meeting and the levy set for the board. The levy that will be discussed, there'll be a budget voted on tonight, there are four resolutions tonight, and then at the next board meeting, the board will vote on the budget for next year.
Well, salaries are a big part of the budget, that's why I bring it forward.
Well, our budget, actually, if you do the math, our salary benefits is 62% of our budget, okay? I'd ask you to look around the area and find a lower number. There may be some, but I would suggest to you that 62% is significantly less than a majority of all of our surrounding districts. I could be wrong, but I'm fairly confident that 62% is, and granted, this didn't start with this board, and there are board members, people from previous boards that started this process of carefully examining what it means to run a district in a fiscally sound manner.
Well, I mean, if we're going to run in a fiscally sound manner, I mean, don't we, shouldn't we, I mean, does fiscally make sense to pay above market value when our tax base is not there?
We're not paying above market value. We're, we were actually below market value. And the other thing that I'd point out is, if you want to talk about administration, we are running as lean as possible with administration. There, it would be extremely difficult, and wouldn't happen without major changes and major problems, to eliminate any of the administration right now. So, when you're doing that, when you're running lean, you need to pay market value and make sure that you've got the right people in place. Because, you know, you start running lean, bring somebody in with no experience, and make him 30% less or 40%, I don't care, whatever number you want to put on it, you're probably going to get 30 or 40% or even more type of employee too. So, I'm happy with our administration, and I think our salaries are right in line.
Well, when you look at it, per pupil and per employee estimate, one of our neighboring districts, we're at, just say, the top, the top administrator, I'll just compare that, per student, they're at $25 per student and $144 per employee. Right now, we are at...
You know what, I'll tell you what, Derek, let me stop you right there, because I don't look at that. What I look at is, we have the highest-tenured superintendent in the Capitol Conference, or second-highest, excuse me, and the man has saved us more money than anything that he could cost us. So, when I look at administrator salaries, if they're in line, they're in line, and I think we're just fine where we're at.
I'd like to interject a moment. I'm not sure who you are, but our business tonight is the four resolutions, not discussion about administrator salaries. So I'd like to get back to the, the business of the meeting.
All right, anything else on the budget? All right. Onto new business. Do I have a motion to, I will entertain a motion to either do Resolution 1 or Resolutions 1 through 4, whatever the electorate would like to do. On 1 through 4?
Oh, sir.
Okay. Motion on the table is to authorize Resolutions 1 through 4. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. And now, we need to establish a date for the 2016 annual meeting. Recommendation is about the same time next year, October 24th at 7:00 PM. Do you have a motion for that?
So moved on.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Sir.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next meeting is set. And is there any other business which may legally be addressed in an annual meeting? Hearing done, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved on.
Thank you, do I have a second? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you guys all for coming.